Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll call on Commissioner Schaefer to lead us in opening prayer, and then Commissioner Gooch will be leading us in the pledge to the flag.
I'd ask you to please bow your heads with me. And as I pray for our county, I just ask that you think about what it is that you believe in and what it is that you live for. Come before you tonight, and we just pray to the great I am, the one who has showered us with blessings in this city, in this county, in our state, and in our country, that we're able to come together and meet as this and discuss and to vote on what it is, what it is best for our county, and is the same thing for our state. And we just ask you, dear Father, to be with us. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us. Be with each one of us here this evening, dear Lord. And we ask you especially to be with Tammy Sandlin and Tammy Coats, and put your healing touches on them, dear Lord, and all the rest that we know that are dear to us, that need your help. We just thank you for all things, and we just ask you to be with our service people, wherever they may be throughout the world. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Okay, thank you. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning their approval? Commissioner Sandlin.
I was looking at the fact book. I didn't pay attention to my pictures. Right there on the front, my kids are, so it's pretty awesome. Anyway, I've reviewed the minutes, and I so moved as written. Thank you.
Right. Second from Commissioner Jernigan. Anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Like sign opposed? All right, thank you very much. First, we have a resolution of recognition, and our solid waste director, Mr. McNolan, is going to present this resolution of recognition to honor those at the Christiana Middle School Recycling Program.
Good evening. We dumped all of our trash at Middle Point Landfield, which should be closing in about 15 years. So we've got a big push to try to educate and enforce recycling. We started a single-stream collection program about three years ago. Christiana Middle was already doing a whole lot, so we just enhanced their program. And then they've done a whole lot since then. So I'd like to ask for the Christiana Middle School team to come forward, and I'll read the resolution. He's the principal. Ms. Powell is the recycle pusher there.
[laughing]
And this is part of her team. No, I'm not. Resolution of recognition, 2013 Christiana Middle School Recycling Program. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that consistently have a positive impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County. And whereas all 882 students and 91 teachers and staff members of Christiana Middle School have worked collectively, consistently, and relentlessly to set the example, becoming a leader and role model for the entire Rutherford County school system in regard to recycling and environmental stewardship. And whereas through the efforts of Ms. Dawn Powell, sponsor of the recycling club, and its members, as well as many different participating classes and organizations, Christiana Middle School effectively reduced the school's waste stream 25 percent by volume, having a direct and positive impact on Rutherford County's solid waste operations. And whereas Christiana Middle School is impacting our future by educating our students and faculty utilizing waste reduction and prevention, and was recognized for their efforts as the 2013 Recycler of the Year in the school category by the Tennessee Recycling Coalition. And whereas, and now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that this legislative body extends its resolution recognizing to Christiana Middle School for its outstanding accomplishment in winning the 2013 Tennessee School Recycler of the Year, and to Principal Robert Horn, Ms. Dawn Powell, and participating teachers, staff, and most importantly, the students for their dedication and commitment. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014.
And Mr. Jernigan and Mr. Phillips have a motion to second. And all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you, young people, and all of your leaders for doing this. This is extraordinarily important to your future and the future of Rutherford County. Okay, now we have a time for public comments, and we have two people that wish to speak. First is Ms. Laura Beth Payne. There she is. Come forward and make your comments and tell us what you would like to share with us.
I'm Laura Beth Payne, and tonight I'm here representing Read to Succeed and their One Book Initiative for this year. We've made our choice for this year's One Book Push, which is The Last Policeman. So I'd like to read a few notes and tell you a little bit about it, and then pass it on to one of you. The One Book Community Read, as many of you know, is in its seventh year of being an initiative to encourage reading among especially adults in our community. This year's readers told us that they'd like a mystery, so we chose Mystery, which is The Last Policeman. Here's the premise. An asteroid is on a cataclysmic collision course with Earth. With just six months until impact, most industry has shut down, and hordes of people have abandoned their jobs to pursue their bucket lists. Many others are committing suicide. To young detective Hank Palace, one of those suicides seems suspicious, and despite his colleagues' lack of enthusiasm, and despite the difficulties he faces, he continues to want to solve the murder. Despite the apparent futility of solving a murder, if we're all going to die, Hank Palace keeps on working the case. And to many on our committee, this book was a remarkable example about persistence and hope in the face of disaster. The Last Policeman is the first of a trilogy, and won the 2012 Edgar Award from the Mystery Writers of America, and was named one of the best books of 2012 by Amazon. Discover Magazine calls the book darkly intriguing, and another reviewer says it raises big questions about civilization, community, desperation, and what it means to hope. More than one review calls the book fun. There's a lot of humor in it, interestingly enough, and we feel strongly that it will affect readers in a variety of ways, but also powerful ways. So I have brought a copy of the book tonight to give to this council, and we ask that one of you take it, read it, and go to our Facebook page and shares the conversation with us, and join us in encouraging the love of reading in our community. Who would be interested in taking the copy of this book tonight? All right. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Save our constitutional form of government. What is it that gives our citizens the freedom to control our county and state governments? The answer: The United States Constitution guarantees that freedom. The Constitution was given to us by God-fearing patriots in 1787, and it is wonderfully designed to prevent the destruction of our freedoms. How does it guarantee those freedoms? The amazing truth is this: The three powers of our government are separated to the extent that the resulting system of checks and balances should eject those individuals from their illicit seats of power, where constitutional justice and government by and for the people is being destroyed. Examples of this kind of conduct are witnessed when we observe the policies of regional or metro government. This type of government, whose world headquarters is in Chicago, deliberately transfers control of the citizens' unspent revenue away from the taxpayers and over to the bankers, who do not use this money for the purposes for which the appropriation was originally made by the county commissioners. After this illicit transfer of unspent surplus revenue, the taxpayers, who are the real owners of this money, no longer have control of it. Therefore, the commissioners should refund this surplus to the taxpayers, or make the money easily accessible in order to eliminate shortfalls in next year's budget. Controlled by the banks, our surplus is not easily accessible to us. Submitting to Federal Reserve policies is dangerous. The Federal Reserve is unaccountable to the voters, because many board members are foreign citizens. Two plans of action may solve this constitutional crisis. We must inflict a crushing defeat against our county's future attempt to revive another Metro Charter plan. The second plan of action is that Tennessee can revive our state banking system by introducing strong financial assets into the state bank. North Dakota has a very successful state bank, which is strong because it is not associated with the corrupt Federal Reserve Bank. We must not follow Obama's philosophy. When he bypasses Congress by signing executive orders, he is following socialistic metro policy, which eliminates the system of checks and balances. Therefore, he is destroying our constitutional form of government and is becoming a dictator. To use our surplus revenue wisely, we need to adopt Senator Frank Nicely's Senate Bill 1877 as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Gooch for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Steering has a whole host of resolutions for you this evening. The first one, you will notice on your desk a list of notary candidates, and I'll move for their election, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we need to fill a vacancy on the Conservation Board. Steering nominates Mr. Chuck Clark, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
And second by Commissioner Jeff Jordan. All right. Any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. All right, we will continue the agenda. There is no unfinished business, and then we'll start the reports by the standing committees. There is a Purchasing Committee monthly report that we need to acknowledge and approve. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Cook, with Commissioner Schaefer seconding. Does anyone have any questions on that report? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ely, we will let you start the Budget Finance and Investment Committee Report, and remind all of us that at 6:30, we will pause a moment and come back and take up the two requests we have for public hearing. Okay? Thank you.
Item K-2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Correctional Work Center, this is to purchase a new DVR for that department, increased expenditures for other equipment, $18,025, and a decrease from unassigned fund balance of $18,025. From Emergency Management, this is to complete the communication project, and this increased expenditure is transferred to other funds of $200,000, coming from the development tax restricted for capital, $200,000. From the Finance Office, this amendment is additional funding for various departments in the county as a result of open enrollment and changes of coverage, increased expenditures for employee and dependent insurance from the HR Department, $2,600, from planning, $10,700, from building and maintenance, $3,550, from finance, $1,400, OIT, $4,350, Chancery Court, $2,900, Fire, $6,100, MA, $1,130, and local health, $1,270, for a total of $34,000 as decreased expenditures for employee and dependent insurance. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any questions on this? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2B, an ambulance fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue, patient charges, $20,000, increased expenditures for refunds, $20,000. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2C, the general purpose school fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedules attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And we have three amendments. The first amendment is to amend $12,079 from unassigned fund balance to spectrum professional development, and to amend $225,376 into the account 47143, education of handicapped, IDEA, and the related special education expenditures. To amend $6,009 in insurance recovery funds and the related expenditure for a maintenance vehicle, and to amend function 72230 Vocational Education Program, and 71300 Vocational Education, in order to cover the replacement position. And from classified staff, to amend $5,770 in already budgeted classified staff pay and benefits to cover other classified staff budget line items, where replacement staff have more experience than the staff in place when the budget was prepared early in 2014. And the last one is the attendance system, to amend $53,800 from already communication and postal charges budgeted to contracted services for attendance in order to fund the data conversion and training costs for our new attendance software. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Schaefer.
Just to mention, number three, the amendment. This is one of those things that the state comes up with, they've done it before, and we pay for it. In other words, it's called an unfunded mandate.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2D, a special purpose fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue from asset forfeitures, $39,471, increased expenditures for confidential drug enforcement, $29,471, repair and maintenance of vehicles, $5,000, law enforcement supplies, $2,500, and uniforms, $2,500. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2E, a contract with the Tennessee Department of Health. This is our annual contract. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. For the provision of health services toward the support of the Rutherford County Health Department in the amount of $603,222, with $474,847 being direct local funds for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, $32,094 being prior year savings for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, and $96,281 in appropriations for which Rutherford County shall be billed for the period of July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Does anyone have any questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2F, an amendment to the state grant contract for the Health Department. Whereas Rutherford County previously entered into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in September of 2013 to fund programs administered by the county Health Department, and whereas the maximum liability to the state of Tennessee in the original contract is $2,112,300, and whereas the state of Tennessee wishes to amend the original contract by $19,000 to add a licensed practical nurse position, increasing the maximum liability to the state of Tennessee to $2,131,300, and whereas the county has previously approved a budget for this function, 55190, other local health services, in the amount of $2,023,261, and wishes to amend its budget to reflect the amount of the amended contract. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the amendment to the contract. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. To add a licensed practical nurse position, and additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to record the total amended amount of the contract. Health Department, increased revenue of $108,039, increased expenditures, $62,719, and the related benefits. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Serenio. Anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2G, a letter of agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for special needs funding for the Health Department. Whereas the Commissioner for the Tennessee Department of Health has approved special needs funding pursuant to TCA 68-2-901 for Rutherford County from the state's tobacco settlement. Whereas this special needs funding will provide funds in the amount of $103,668 for smoking cessation program for pregnant women. And whereas this special needs funding is acknowledged by a letter of agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health as to how these funds can be utilized and how the funds have to be accounted for. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the letter of agreement, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. To accept the special needs funding, and additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to record the special needs funding. For the Health Department, increased revenue of other health and welfare, $103,668, increased expenditures, contracts with other agencies, $33,902, travel, $4,000, other supplies and materials, $41,900, and other charges, $23,866. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner P. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2A, a request to apply for a state home grant. Whereas the Tennessee Housing Development Agency grant application period is open for submittal of home grants that do not require a local match. And whereas Rutherford County desires to improve housing within the county with these grant funds. And whereas Rutherford County desires to apply for home grant funds in the amount of $300,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the home grant in an amount not to exceed $300,000. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And we have a second from Commissioner Young. Any questions on this? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes, motion passes.
K-2I, a contract for the purchase of the D&amp;J property for the judicial parking and a related budget amendment. Whereas there is a need for a parking facility to accompany the new judicial building that is planned, and whereas the existing land at the county office building should be reserved for further future expansion. And whereas a purchase and sale agreement has been negotiated between Pacific and Southern Company, Inc., and Rutherford County for property at 224 North Walnut Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, also known as the Daily News Journal. And whereas the agreement contains a 60-day inspection period after the effective date, and a 90-day closing period after the effective date. And whereas the property is being offered for a cost of $600,000, with an initial deposit required of $30,000 that is refundable if the agreement is terminated during the inspection period, and the cost of the inspection being estimated at $20,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the purchase and sale agreement, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. To purchase the property at 224 North Walnut Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, upon a favorable inspection, and additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to provide funding for the purchase. Increased expenditure for land, $650,000, a decrease from unassigned fund balance, $650,000. Resolve this 13th day of February 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Several have raised their hands. Commissioner- Several have raised their hands, Commissioner Jernigan, Macadoo, and Young. All right. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Sandin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I had mentioned in the Budget Committee or ask about the inspection period and stuff, and it kind of lays it out in here. 60 days, I don't know if it's enough time or not, but then again, I'm really worried about the asbestos in that building. They had a lot of different chemicals that they did the papers with, the inks and thinners and whatever and whatever, and I think that would require a Phase 2. I'm not for sure. But then also, the old filling station or whatever that was on the corner, I think this is part of it. It would go straight across from the look of the map that I saw. I don't know if the tanks are still in there, but a lot of times they still are, or there's some contaminated soils. I'm wondering who's responsible for this. I mean, if we buy it, we're responsible, or we would have to take care of the asbestos in the building, any kind of contaminated soil, and that can run into the millions. I know I've sold convenience stores before as a realtor, so I just need a few answers on that, or...
Well, we will engage an environmental entity to make all of those assessments and evaluations. I already have a proposal to do that. If this is approved, they'll start tomorrow. So, and whatever it takes, Phase 1, Phase 2, it will be done. It will be documented, and we'll have estimates on whatever the cost of remediation would be, and if it's more than we think is acceptable and reasonable through the Property Management Committee, we will communicate this, and we will keep you properly informed as we move forward.
I appreciate that. I do. The county commission and government don't work as fast as a private entity buying a piece of property. I know how long it takes there, and usually there's a longer timeframe in there on doing these Phase 2s, and Phase 1 usually doesn't take very long. The Phase 2 and doing the core samples and doing the testing and as far as anything in that building or under the building, as far as soil, and then also on the property where the gas station was, I mean, that's going to take a little bit of time. If we don't get the results back for 60 days, and then we're going to have to meet the next meeting, then we've lost our $30,000, which is minute compared to the $600,000 that we could if we buy this, and then we're going to have to clean the property up, and then, of course, build our building. I'm just, I'm just, the timing of it right here, I'm for the project. I think it'd be a great location for our garage over there, and we're really linked into the judicial system one day, and then to the building that's right there right now for all of its needs, but I'm just a little hesitant on timeframe and knowing how the county can operate.
Well, the firm that we're going to use is fully aware of everything that you mentioned there as a possibility, and they are comfortable that we can have this, all of this work completed within the 60-day period. So, I'm confident we can do that. If we don't, we can turn back in a refusal, a rejection, if they would choose not to give us additional time if it was needed.
Well, Mayor, I think we can do it in 60, or they can do it in 60 days. It's just getting the information back to us so we can act on the purch, if not, then we would lose, you know, unless you're handling that as a total deal. If it comes back bad, then we're not going to buy the property, and then that's...
Comes back, yeah, I don't know what bad is bad, but if it comes back too bad and it's not reasonable, we're not going to move forward.
Well, I don't want to say that the property's bad, you know, as far as a test result back, but when, if you've got an endless amount of money, you can clean up any piece of property. That's not the situation, is how much will it take if the soils are contaminated in any way, form, or fashion, and then also the asbestos, or we're going to have some sort of feel what that's going to cost in tearing down that building and taking care of that asbestos?
I can tell you an asbestos study was done some time ago, and the money to remediate that asbestos is not excessive. It's nominal in the scope of things, so I think that's not an issue. The only issue that potentially is out there is what may have happened with respect to that, those gas tanks. So, we'll know that. I think we can get that data. It won't, it's not that difficult, and they will mobilize forces immediately, and we'll keep you properly informed in a timely manner. We'll have preliminary data at the next property management meeting, which is latter part of this month.
I thought there'd be more questions. We're building a four-story parking garage, correct?
That's approximately how big we think it would have to be to be able to accommodate the required...
I may have missed a meeting or something. I don't know how big this parking garage's going to be and how much it's going to be.
Parking garage is going to need to be large enough to accommodate almost 400 cars to meet the building codes requirements based on the square footage of the judicial building itself. That's, that city codes requires that.
Sure.
And it'll take about four stories, we think, to do that.
And the price tag on that?
Somewhere under $7 million, all the design costs, et cetera.
Just for the parking garage?
Parking garage.
So, we're looking 8 million turn kids, I so to, you know, I so to speak, say, in a lot of situations, buying the land, cleanup, well, no, we're just talking about buying the land, so we're in excess of 8 million dollars.
I don't, we're at 600,000 here plus seven or under for the actual construction, so it shouldn't be...
But you got cleanup. You got to tear the buildings down and...
We have to do demolition.
So, how much would that be?
I don't know, but I don't think it's going to be more than a few hundred thousand dollars.
All right. Any other questions? Ready to vote? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We're just five or six minutes past our public hearing time, but we're, we will now go back and address the two requests we have for rezoning, and first one is the rezoning request 13-A019 on behalf of Mr. Patel, located at 118 Crescent Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of approximately 10 acres, of which they're just requesting rezoning on 5.28 acres. So, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. As you stated, this rezoning application is for about 5 and 5.3 acres along the corner of Crescent Road and Shelbyville Highway. The applicants would like to rezone the property in order to develop the site with a convenience store and retail and other commercial uses intended to serve the residents in that immediate and surrounding areas. There has been a concept plan included with your agenda materials tonight. I'd like to call your attention to that to finish my brief presentation here. When this originally came to the Planning Commission in December of 2013, it, request was for the entire site, basically the entire 10 acres of the property. After hearing the concerns of the neighbors in the area, mainly dealing with drainage and also with some traffic concerns, the Planning Commission seemed more comfortable looking at maybe just a portion of the property to be rezoned as opposed to the whole 10 acres. With that, the applicant went back to the drawing board. They came back with the concept plan that's included in your agenda materials tonight. You'll see the parcel, it's basically divvied out into two separate tracks, Tracks 1 and 2. Track 1 would remain residentially zoned. It'd be about 4.4 acres. The parcel 2, which you can see on there, which shows a proposed convenience market, gas station, and maybe a future retail use about, again, 5.28 acres, would actually be the portion that's zoned commercial, not the entire property as originally proposed. Also, they wanted to make clear that on the concept plan, you'll see that the, at the, there's a possibility that they'd like to do something like mini warehouse, self-storage type facilities in the future. That would actually be in the future on the Track 1, which is not being proposed for rezoning tonight. The area between the proposed buildings and the Track 1 really supposed to be left blanked. That'll be their soils areas and everything for their septic needs for the retail uses, so I just wanted to point that out to you. After hearing the concerns and after the applicant came back to the Planning Commission in January, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application by unanimous vote. The applicant is present and can answer any questions, and I can answer any questions as well.
Okay. Do we have any questions of Mr. Demossi while he's here before us? Okay, Mr. Demossi, if any few will stand by. We will declare the public hearing open on rezoning request number 13-A019. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this particular request, please come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments, please.
Thank you all so much for hearing us tonight. My name is Deborah Radabaugh. This is my husband, Mark, my mother-in-law, Patsy, and my daughter, Maylie, is in the audience watching. We shared with you all during the last two meetings our lack of support of this project. That is probably because we are the next-door neighbor. Their fence line runs into our fence line. This has been our home for 20 years. It has been our property that and further on down for over 70 years. My husband's family has owned that property. This is something that's probably a pretty emotional thing for us because it is, in our opinion, an invasion of our privacy, even though it has only been zoned at this point, five acres plus. We have concerns because there is a huge water problem already, and I know that can be fixed, but it is something that has, has really been a plague to us all along already. Plus, we feel that this area is, the traffic is high a lot of times of day, and it is also fast. This is where the speed zone is higher, and we feel like it could be an issue that could, could cause problems. There's a lot, there's a lot more traffic there. I don't know if there's been a traffic study done or not. We have seen some people out there doing some land surveys, but we have not seen anyone doing a traffic study. However, there is a lot of congestion in that area, getting out on 231. There's been a lot of subdivisions built back behind us. It is a lot more if people are coming on and off, and there's no place for trucks really to pull off at that, at that point. So, we feel it's a safety issue. We feel it's a flooding issue, and of course, it is, we have children, and I, I'm sorry, but I have an aversion to having a business there where there'll be a lot of people coming in and out, when I have a child that's playing right behind there. It's just something that I feel very strongly about. We want to thank the commissioners for only allowing it to be zoned halfway, but I know that it will eventually come to the table again. We, you know, this is something that we feel is, is in respect to our family, that it has been zoned smaller, but we know it will come back up again. We feel that they don't really have a vested interest in this area. They don't live there. I don't even know if some of them live in this county, some of the real estate agents. I mean, they will go home to their homes, and this will be left in our backyard, and I'm sorry, but it is something that we feel very, very strongly about. We are against it all the way, and that's all I have to say. Mark, would you like to say anything?
Well, that covers pretty well the heart of it. You know, my main thing is, number one, since I've been raised, every job I've ever had is, is safety comes first, and pulling out on 231 highway, you better have your safety belt on and know what you're doing, and you're creating a, it's just not designed, it's not designed to handle a business like that. It's just, just because you own a piece of property that borders 231 highway, does it make, make it right for you to make that commercial? You know, some things are, are not right for certain areas, and this, this is just not right, pulling out tonight. It was like, if they could only see what I'm seeing right now, and I just beg of you to, to really look at it in a standpoint of safety and, instead of somebody just making a quick buck, and that's what it's, it's what it's turned into. It's like she said, you know, he's, he's high-tailed it out of there, and whoever represents him is, is, they're doing the same, and we sort of get left with what's behind, and, and, I just want to have a good community coming in from that end of the county, and, and, from what we have right now, it's not very attractive, and until you get into the Barfield area, and a lot is growing, and, and, and a lot of our needs are going to be met by that, and I don't think that a, that a market is going to, it's going to be, it's more or less going to be somewhere for a beer run, you know?
Well, it's not like there's not a lot of other stores in a very, very short distance from there. If it was like really needed and we were in the middle of nowhere, but it's not. There are places to get anything you need just within, you know, a mile or so. So, that's our opinion, and are you...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak for or against this request? I don't see anyone else rising to speak. If there's no one else coming forward, we're going to declare the public hearing closed, and do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Demossi, would you come up to me and please, sir? The residents there, I actually asked a question about flooding. Can you explain how the flooding will be addressed on this, on this plot?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. At this point, all we're looking at is the zoning of the property. So, whenever, if the property is zoned and a development proposal is brought forward, our engineering staff will take a very close look at this. Actually, our engineer, our county engineer, Mr. Hill, lives out in this area and is very familiar with the situation. I think he's actually spoke with the two speakers who were just up here on a number of occasions about the situation out there, so he's very well aware of the situation out there as far as drainage is concerned, but as of right now, until we have a development proposal that's brought to us, we have nothing to act on. So, whenever something is brought in, that is something based on the, our local regulations, state, federal guidelines, and everything that we have to go by, that is something we look at very, very closely.
And the other issue was traffic.
Yes, sir.
Would the traffic be handled in the same manner?
Yes, sir, it would be. We've already shared with the applicant some of the concerns we had for traffic as far as how they ingress and egress from the property, about how to, how we want possibly just one access off of 231. You know, we've discussed that with them, and basically we've just said, whenever we see a development proposal, we'll discuss that in greater length at that time, but we have concerns with the traffic there as well.
Now, it's, the old plan that we had, there was a Christian and Buchanan-type node or whatever, I don't know the exact word. Was this in that area at that time?
I'm not sure if it was in the Christian and Buchanan. I will say that under our comprehensive plan, this is located on a, basically an urban-type thoroughfare, and it recommends a mixture of uses along those thoroughfares. So, we felt, staff and the Planning Commission also felt that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan that was adopted.
Okay. With those questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the request and with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
All right. Do we have a second?
Say.
Commissioner Allen, more discussion. Commissioner P.
I've got a question to follow up on. Commissioner Farley's there. The question was asked by the people that were opposed to this. Has there been a traffic study done? Has there been one done, and if not, are we capable in this county of doing one ourselves?
The answer to your question, has one been done, there have been some traffic counts out in that area that the state does, TDOT. We have not required any kind of a traffic study at this time. To answer your other question, do we have the ability to do that now? The answer is yes. There are certain triggers in the zoning ordinance now which can require a traffic study to be submitted when we look at a site plan, but even if it doesn't meet those triggers, if we as staff feel that there are issues that need to be addressed through a traffic study, we can still require that.
Your planning department or your BZA department asking for a study, trigger that?
Well, just the submittal of the site plan would have us start reviewing, and if it's something that would have to go in front of the Planning Commission, if we felt that one needed to be requested before it went to the Planning Commission, we could do that at that time. If it was used, they had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, could they require something like that? I mean, I think as staff, we still could. The commission or the staff, or I'm sorry, the Board of Zoning Appeals may be able to as well, but the ordinance does give staff specific, the ability to do that.
Well, I'll ask that question to Josh. If our planning department or our BZA asked for a study to be done on a particular piece of property, will it be... of property, will it be done? If they request a traffic study to be done on a particular issue that they're looking at, will it be done? Can it be done legally? And if not, why not?
Every application is different. So, whether we're talking about rezoning versus a site plan versus a special exception, they're all different. They're all handled differently under zoning resolutions, so that isn't relevant in terms of what we're talking about. But more directly to your question, if the zoning resolution allows staff to request a traffic study in the process, then you actually have to request it? Yes, then it's free.
Well, which one of you guys is going to answer this question for me, then?
And I apologize if I'm not answering the question. I guess I'm trying to, I thought I had answered it when you'd asked if...
Well, Josh just said that, you know, if the zoning allows it, well, I'm asking you, does it allow it on this one in particular, or is there any that it doesn't allow it on?
Let me read it. I'm going to read you what the code says exactly regarding traffic studies. Okay. It says, "When a traffic study is required," and this is in section 11 of our zoning ordinance. It says, "A traffic impact study to assess the transportation impacts of a zoning amendment application, special exception application, subdivision application, or site plan application shall be required when..." And there's three different triggers here. "One is the expected number of trips generated by the proposed development exceeds 100 peak hour vehicle trips per day as defined by the Institute of Traffic Engineers' trip generation report, or by a trip generation study of comparable land uses prepared by a qualified and experienced transportation professional. Two, a zoning or land use change is requested that will seek, that will result, excuse me, in a more intensive trip generating use that exceeds 100 peak hour vehicle trips as defined in that first item that I just said. Or the third one, this is kind of the catch-all, "The county engineer or planning director has specific concerns about adjacent or nearby roadways and intersections, site access and/or safety issues." So, in other words, if they submit a site plan and we look at that and we say, it may not trip these other triggers as far as the peak generation, but there's something out there that we see that we have concerns about, we can say, "Before you bring this forward to the planning commission or to the border zoning appeals or whoever it is, we want to see a traffic study." And that has to be something that we want to look at before we'll move it forward. We have that ability now.
And when you're saying staff, are you also speaking of the four appointed county commissioners that are on the planning and also the appointed people on your BZA? Are they considered part of the staff that you're reading?
I don't think so, because it's very specific about saying county engineer or planning director.
I didn't think so either. So, basically, if our planning, Steve or some of these other guys that are on planning wanted a traffic study done, they wouldn't be able to request it, or they could request it, but if you deemed it not necessary, you wouldn't do it, even though, say, these guys thought it was necessary or wanted it.
Well, if they think it's necessary, I mean, I think we'd have to have a discussion at that point. I think Josh is right, it's very site-specific and specific upon the application that we're talking about. But generally, we tend to be more conservative on that regard, especially now that we have the tool in here, which we didn't have under the older regulations.
Well, I haven't found that to be the case.
Well, again, this is a new, we didn't have this under the old ordinance that was adopted prior to 2013. I mean, I can think of a couple of projects already that we've looked at that we've basically told them that have not gone before the planning commission yet, that if, before this even comes in, we're going to want to see a traffic study. And at this point, we still have not seen them because they haven't been moving forward.
This was not necessarily directed at this particular issue, but I think this is something that we all need to think about and discuss, and especially you guys that are on planning. You know, if you don't have the right to ask for it, and you think that it's there, and you ask for it, and you're not getting it, I think that's a problem. So, anyway, I'll let it lie there.
Thank you. Commissioner Black?
I'd like to follow up a little bit on Commissioner P. The other night at Public Works, I think I alluded to some of the questions that Commissioner P had asked. I don't think what you said as far as this body, how I interpret it was, we could either vote it up or vote it down. It would go back to planning. We had no decision. We got no decision on turning lanes or whatever, right?
That's correct, yes, sir. I mean, as the body of the county commission, that's correct, yes, sir.
I got a problem with it, too, Commissioner.
Any other discussion? Is, are we okay on a voice vote? Do you want me to call for a roll call? Hearing, no objections. We're all in favor of this, then please say aye. How many opposed? Please hold your hands up, please. One, two, three, four in opposition. That the record reflects seventeen to four. Mr. Demossi, we are ready for zoning request fourteen dash A zero zero one. On behalf of Stan in Terry Vault, sixty-eight fifty-four Last Cassis Pike, existing zoning, residential medium density, proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of approximately five acres.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Last Cassis Pike. As far as the type of zoning and the type of development that's proposed at this particular piece of property, it's pretty similar to what was, what we looked at at our last application. They like to rezon the entire property here to commercial services to develop the site with retail, other commercial uses to serve the residents in the median and surrounding area. At the planning commission, there were a number of concerns that were brought up, again, about traffic in the area. There are a number of commercial uses around this particular piece of property. They have a Dollar General immediately to the east. There's also the county's convenience center across the street, also some commercially-zoned property, used to be a landscape nursery, also located across the street. There was a number of, actually, a lot of the similar concerns that were, we just discussed in our last application, were brought up with this as well. And I will say, I mean, just to answer that, similar to the way I answered just a moment ago, that really, as far as the use of the property at this point, that doesn't necessarily dictate what kind of traffic you're going to get. A lot of the traffic concerns will be determined by the type of use that is proposed. The applicant is present, they may want to speak to that. Some of the uses they've been looking at would probably be considered more of a low-impact type commercial use, maybe like a real estate office or something to that effect. In that situation, that may not necessarily add a whole lot of traffic to the existing area. However, if a use does come through that we feel would have an impact to the area from a traffic standpoint, staff does have the ability to request a traffic study. If it doesn't already trip the triggers that are in there, staff can still look at that and say, "We have some issues here. We think a traffic study is necessary." With that, the planning commission did recommend unanimously an approval for this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi? All right, thank you, sir. Then we will declare the public hearing open for this rezoning request fourteen dash A zero zero one. If there are those present that wish to speak for or against this request, it's your opportunity to come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stan Vault. I am the owner of the property, and my wife's present with us. A couple of concerns that came up through planning commission, they asked me what we were going to do with it, and to be quite frank with you, I don't know specifically what uses. We looked at a number of ideas. Of course, most of y'all know I've been in the real estate and auction business for many years. We're looking at the opportunity right now to expand that business, to serve the public in the disposition of personal property. We also looked at the idea of maybe some type of covered storage for boats and RVs, that being on the direct route to Center Hill Lake. A lot of people in Murfreesboro do not have an opportunity to store their boat or RV in their, on their property anymore because of the size of the lots that have been developed in Rutherford County in the last 20 years. So, we look at a couple of opportunities like that. One specifically we've looked at is, those of you familiar with Valley Growers, they were there for a few years. A little bit closer to Murfreesboro, we thought about that. A lot of people in the community have regretted that they have moved and closed their operation. One opportunity we're looking strongly at, if we have the capability of doing it, a few years back, United States Postal Service wanted to replace the post office in Last Cassis, and at that time, they did not have a site. And if you kind of know the politics within the postal service, everything has to be on go and be ready when they're ready. And so, the community missed the opportunity to get a new post office out there. You know, we could possibly look at that. I can assure this body this. I've lived there my entire life. My brother lives there. Most of my family lives there. Nobody's going to let me do anything that will be a detriment to that community. I will assure you of that. So, with that said, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate your consideration tonight, and I hope for approval.
Are there others that wish to speak for or against this request? Okay, I don't see anyone else wishing to come forward. We're going to declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning this rezoning request? Mr. Black?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with the proposal as far as the rezoning of the property, but I've had a lot of concerns about the business, whatever business might go in there. Traffic issues. I addressed this at planning. I addressed it at Public Works. I guess I'll have to address it at planning if it, depending on what business goes in there, but I've asked for a turning lane there. Reason being, it's a convenience center that averages about 2,000 in-and-out trips there on the weekends. We've got a Dollar General store there. Got another business there, Century Eat &amp; Air Business across the road there. In this particular area, they all clustered together, and I've got a lot of calls about what might go in there. So, I just wanted to make that known, be put in the business, and I'll be addressing it at the planning, I suppose. Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Second was that Commissioner P. Other questions or discussion? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Demossi and Mrs. Ely. We may continue with our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
We are ready for item K two J, a resolution declaring the intent to reimburse itself from a future bond issue. And this resolution is doing just that, declaring the intent of the county to reimburse itself from a future bond issue as it relates to our previous contract that we just approved. A resolution declaring the intent of Rutherford County to reimburse itself for certain expenditures relating to Public Works projects with the proceeds of bonds or other debt obligations to be issued in an approximate amount of $650,000. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
We have a second, Commissioner Jordan. Questions, discussion? All right, all of you in favor of this, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Do I? Well, we cannot, we've already got the money appropriated. This is just a process or procedure, but just to make sure we are okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item K two K, authorization to offer contract to lease space to the USDA at Lane Agrapark, whereas the USDA is currently leasing space at Lane Agrapark through a previously approved extension of a 10-year lease through September 30, 2014, and whereas the USDA has requested proposals for leasing space at Lane Agrapark with a new five-year lease with an additional five-year option, and whereas the current rate is $14 per square foot for the 9,300 square foot occupied, and whereas Rutherford County desires to submit a proposal for a new lease at a rate of $16 per square foot or $148,800 annually. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County and submit a proposed lease offer to the USDA for $16 per square foot for the 9,300 square foot occupied at Lane Agrapark. Resolve this 13th day of February, 2014.
Commissioner Sandin?
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandin, anyone have any questions on this? All of you in favor, then? Nope? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K two L, an approval of the total project cost for Smyrna Primary School, whereas Smyrna Primary School is being renovated and an addition is being constructed, and whereas the Rutherford County Commission previously approved funding $2,200,000 for construction, and whereas the renovation and addition is estimated to be $2,597,397, including architect, engineering, site development, construction, and furniture and fixtures. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that total project cost funding not to exceed $2,600,000 be approved, and the funding be provided by a future bond issue or local funds. Resolve this 13th day of February, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Three people, Commissioner McAdoo, Jeff Jordan, and Allen wish to second that. Okay, I should have said Ms. Allen first, since that's in her district, but anyway, excuse me. So, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions or discussions on this? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K two M, presentation of CT zero two five three four. Commissioners, this is just a report on the debt obligation of our internal borrowing of $7,400,000 as it related to Blackman Middle. This is for your information. No action needs to be taken.
Thank you, Ms. Ely, for, again, a very, very excellent job. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the conclusion of the agenda items. There's no report from Health and Education Committee, Property Management Committee, Public Safety Committee, Public Works, and Planning Committee, or the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner P.
Just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department will be having a handbrake fest, and that's from, that's February the 15th from 6:00 to 10:00. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Black?
Yes, Walter Hill Fire Department's got a fish fry March the 1st, 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Last Cassis Fire Department's got a fish fry March the 8th from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock.
Okay, March the 1st for Walter Hill and March the 8th for Last Cassis. Anyone else have any business to come before this body? If not, thank you very much for your participation. We are adjourned.